Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Burke County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for Monday, May the 19th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Appreciate your presence tonight, Madam Clerk. All Commissioners are present, along with our county attorney and Ms. Margaret, our finance officer over there. Okay. I would remind you to please turn off your mobile devices. If you've got items tonight that might make a noise, please set those to silence. And I remind you also, as you come to the podium tonight, please be sure the red light is on before you speak, so that we get a good YouTube recording and our folks can hear you better. And just press the button on the right, and that red light should come on. Pleased tonight to have with us Pastor Keith Barnett from Bridge Worship Center Ministries International. And also, he'll come lead us in our invocation. The following invocation will stand. And then we'll be led by our county attorney as the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we just thank you today, Lord, for the blessings you've given and you're doing. Lord, we ask you to be with us tonight. Lord, we ask you to infiltrate the minds and the hearts that just would come along, and it would be glorified in your name. And we ask you to bless this county, God. Lord, and we ask you to keep a protection over our fire department and their EMS and their officers, everyone that is in the front line with boots on the ground. Lord, we ask you to keep them in the abundance of your hand and your eyes on them. And, Lord, we just give you the glory in everything that you do, and we'll give you the honor, in Jesus's name.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Remain standing for a quick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This brings us to item four of the agenda tonight, approval of agenda. Gentlemen, you've had the agenda for several days. I would entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. All those in favor signify by the uplifted hand. Madam Clerk, this is five to zero. Item number five is approval of meeting minutes. Tonight, we have before us February 17th, 2025 Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, March 3rd, 2025 Board of Commissioners' pre-agenda meeting. Gentlemen, I entertain a motion on those unless there's any corrections.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. All those in favor signify by the uplifted hand. That is five to zero. All right. We have several presentations tonight. First one comes from the America 250 North Carolina Committee update. I'm going to recognize Mr. Ed Phillips tonight, chairman of the American 250 NC Committee. Afternoon, evening, Ed.
Good evening. Before I get started on this report, I wanted to share some really great news that I shared with Commissioner Barry a few minutes ago. I just was on the phone, walking in the door with the National Park Service, and the Linville Falls overlooks have been opened from the Forest Service property site on Old 105. Linville Falls is our number one most visited attraction in Burke County, over a million people a year. So I'm excited to say that that is back open for people to visit and see. The visitor center is going to be a few years, because it was destroyed. But visitors can now come and hike in and actually see the falls from the overlooks. So that's great news. It's a sign that we're recovering and we're resilient. And we're going to get out there and promote that, too. But back to America 250. So a year ago, April, the Commissioners here appointed a 15-member committee to work with the America 250 North Carolina group. And we're excited to tell you that we've met several times. We also applied for and received two grants from the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources, $10,000 for the pole banners that you've seen around town, Valdez has some, Rutherford College has some that they're putting up, Western Piedmont Community College, and every public school in North Carolina, I'm sorry, in Burke County, every public school in Burke County will have them up eventually. So we're excited to have that up. Grant number two, we just received another grant from the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources for a Revolutionary War Week event in September, the last week of September. This will include historic site tours on Friday, September 26th, with 1700s reenactors, an encampment, and a Saturday open house at the Charles McDowell House. Also, all Burke County 4th graders are being invited on a field trip to learn about the American Revolution in Burke County. We've established a Facebook page, and events will begin to be posted and promoted there. We did have a committee meeting, a calendar of meeting on the second Monday of each month. We're currently reevaluating that time and date to try to get some better participation. Some people had a conflict, and we'll let you guys know when that's been rescheduled. But let me tell you, so the Charles McDowell House, the Revolutionary War Weekend, has been going on there for over 25 years. With this grant money, we're going to supersize it. And I like that, because I used to like to supersize everything. But we're going to supersize it with more people, more encampment, more reenactors, and more marketing and advertising to promote that event that weekend here in Burke County. Burke County has some of, if not the, most important Revolutionary War history in western North Carolina. And we're proud to promote that and be a part of that. So I'll take any questions.
All right. Thank you, Ed. Any questions for Ed on this committee report?
Just wanted, and you kind of covered this, Ed, but I wasn't sure. The Old 105 is open from Highway 183, at least to the Linville Falls. Is it open all the way down to the lake?
Yes. Old 105, Kinsler Memorial Highway is open. It's one of the few remaining gravel roads left in western North Carolina that is probably the most scenic road in the whole state. So it is open, and in good shape. Almost any car could make it.
Thank you.
One thing. Ed, can we do something for the rustic by a porridge on up there at Wiseman's View? Can we get it up?
I'll get back to you on that. But I understand what you're talking about.
That's a beautiful spot there.
Yeah, yeah. Very remote.
Yeah.
A lot of weddings occur out there at Wiseman's View.
Easy to get to with wheelchairs and stuff, so it's a beautiful spot.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you, Ed. With that, I entertain a motion to accept this report as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I so move. We accept the report as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. All those in favor signify by the uplifted hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Bring us to item number two in presentations. This is recognition of winners from the Chamber Spring Litter Sweep. This comes from Burke County Chamber Commerce. This will be presented tonight by Tanya Stevenson. Good evening, Tanya.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us. We loved the opportunity to get to celebrate our litter sweep. So thank you for allowing us to be with you guys and for you guys to let our winners know how special they are, that they work so hard. So thank you for this opportunity to be here. Thank you for the proclamation you did that made April 2nd through the 9th our Burke County Chamber Litter Sweep Week. We appreciate that so much. And I really want to say a huge thank you. We couldn't do it at the Chamber without our partners. Like, we do everything. We have to have partners for everything. And we had a presenting investor of Republic Services, and we're so grateful for their partnership. But I also want to really make sure that you guys here, a huge thank you to your convenience site workers and their assistance, because it's those guys that signed off that our folks got to win their awards. And they were all so gracious to work with, and we are so grateful for them. And Mark, for his leadership, and Brian, for all that you do to help us. We just appreciate the county's support. And Kay, so thank you so much for helping us and working with us. This year, we continue to grow, and our participants were 155 registered participants. They made up 16 teams that went out that week. 445 bags of trash was picked up, and 21 bags of recycling. Various large items were picked up, which always amazes me. There was 32 tires, a shopping cart, a recliner, a chair, a bed frame, a battery, various car parts, household debris, and much more. So it's always interesting to hear the stories of what people can find out there on the sides of the street. So I know that you guys have folks out on the sides of the street sometimes, too, so you probably are well aware of that. And what we would like to do is call up our winners tonight and congratulate them and bring them to the front. Is that good with you, Kay? Is that right? I think that's what we do. So we started giving away a recycling champions award, and this year, with 11 bags of recycling, we want to recognize the comma drama volunteers led by Jamie Money. And we have a certificate for them, and if you would come forward and stay forward, and then we'll get all of our award winners up here and take a picture.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I've got half my team here tonight. Yeah, we don't, I don't even realize it. We're getting ourselves. But yeah, we picked up 11 bags of recyclables. It was wild. There was one spot where, that was the spot where somebody just threw all their mountain native.
Standing the microphone right there, so.
Oh, I'm glad. I'm not talking. I just.
You've talked enough, huh?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, guys, for your volunteering at the comma, as well as for the litter sweep. In third place, picking up 52 bags of trash, was the Foothills Conservancy of North Carolina. Y'all don't go anywhere. We want Brittany.
Yeah, y'all stay up here.
Y'all stay up here. Brittany Watkins, I think, is supposed to be here?
I'm here.
Here. Hey, Brittany. So come on up. There's a little gift for you. And if you would stand here with these ladies. In second place, and those of you who have heard me do this speech every year are going to be shocked, is second place is Gary Jennings, who is a team of one, which always amazes me. He still picked up 127 bags of trash, three bags of recycling, a shopping cart, a recliner, a bed frame, eight tires, a battery. Thank you. For those of you who haven't heard me give this presentation, Gary Jennings has come in first place the last three years. But yes, he's a man, he's a team of one. And in first place, picking up 139 bags of trash, numerous large items, including seven tires, cinder blocks, and much, much more, is the team of Burke River Trail Litter Gitters, which I think is the best name. And I think a couple of those ladies are here, if you come join us. And if y'all have it scanned, I think Kay has the gift. By the way, the Litter Gitters were out just about every weekend, weekday. I think there was, every time I looked, they were out picking up trash. So that's wonderful. We appreciate that so much. I would do a song and dance, take up some time, but I don't think y'all want to see that. Marty, don't report on that.
Oh, man, look at this.
So Commissioner Britton has a little gift for the teams. Could we ask the Commissioners to come take a picture with the group?
Absolutely.
Yes, one more. All right, ready? And three, two. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Tanya.
If I could just mention one last thing, I want to say a big thank you to Jenna Cole. She is the staff person for this event, and we're very grateful for all the hard work that she put into it as well. So thank you, gentlemen, for having us tonight, and lady.
Thank you, Sonia. And again, we appreciate all the great work from these folks, helping keep our county clean. And gentlemen, I'll be happy to accept this report as presented with a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the report as presented.
Thank you. Mr. Barry, all those in favor signify by the uplifted hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. This brings us to item three. Just bear with us just a moment. Thank you, ma'am. You said you just need two?
I have a stick.
Who's that? Okay, thank you, everybody, for that moment. All right. Now, this brings us to Proclamation Celebrating Lions Club, presented by Alice Faye Pugh and Terry Hough and Longview Lions Club. Come on down.
Good evening. I presented a few weeks ago, and I didn't bring this speech, but we are the Longview Lions Club, only part of us. We are a club that's been around for 75 years, and we give a lot to, obviously, Longviews in Burke County. And we had our celebration this Saturday and had almost 80 people there for our celebration dinner, so that was very exciting. We do a lot through the community. We have a vision van, you know, for Lions Children's Site, and we do vision screenings to children. And we also are incorporating adults, finally, for the seniors, to help them with vision. That is our main call. And Helen Keller gave us that challenge, and we took it on like banshees. So we have loved giving back to all the communities in the uniform, and we look forward to continuing on to give back to the local communities.
All right. Thank you very much for being here. Let me just highlight a couple of things on the proclamation tonight. Proclamation honoring all Lions Clubs in Burke County and the 75th anniversary of the Longview Lions Club. Lions Club International was founded in 1917 with the mission to empower volunteers to serve their communities, meet humanitarian needs, encourage peace, and promote international understanding, growing into the world's largest service club organization with more than 1.4 million members across more than 200 countries and geographic areas. Lions Clubs around the world have dedicated themselves to critical causes such as improving vision, hearing, youth development, combating hunger, promoting environmental stewardship, providing disaster relief, living out their motto, "We serve through countless acts of generosity and compassion." And I won't read all the rest of this proclamation, but all that you guys are doing, we appreciate it so much. Appreciate what you're doing in Burke County. Let's give these guys a round of applause. Gentlemen, with that, I entertain a motion to approve proclamation number 2025-11.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve proclamation number 2025-11.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. And I'm going to ask us to go down, let's have a vote. All those in favor, five to zero. Let's go down and get us another photo with these guys. Thank you.
I was hoping.
He's going to take a picture.
Do we take it?
No, you have to be in it.
Okay.
It's okay.
Y'all come around this way.
You're going to take a picture.
Your split coffee is concerned. Proclamation for sound load. You're welcome. I'll get you a picture.
I'm happy to take one with your phone, if you'd like.
This brings us to item number seven, scheduled public hearings tonight. We have two public hearings. First one comes from Community Development, zoning map amendment ZMA 2025-03, and a public hearing. This will be presented tonight by Alan Glyons, our Planning Director and Deputy County Manager. Good evening, Alan.
Good evening, Commissioners, members of the public, staff. I'm going to see if I can do that. There we go. There it is. The Community Development Office has received a zoning application from Brian and Robin Smith for a portion of their 23-acre tract down on US 64. And the site is here, this is 64, and this is their property. They live right here, and they'd like to rezone a 4.5-acre portion of the front from Residential 3, R3, to rural mixed use. This is in the Morganton Township, the Salem Fire District, and it's not located in any watershed area. Mr. Smith is a custom home builder. I noted to date that his business has been in Burke County since 1996. He's constructed an outbuilding on that parcel in 2022 with the approval of the Board of Adjustment. He'd like to do more with it and be able to expand his business at that location. This is a general zoning map of the area, the current zoning. We have a mix of activities located on US 64, this area, this area. I noted a couple of others, just sort of reconnaissance out there, driving through, checking things out. There's a business right there that's not zoned commercial yet, and something up the road here was another commercial track. So the area along US 64 tends to be a mix of uses, and that's mostly what a lot of our state highway managed roads are. They have a mixture of activities on them. And so this request to rural mixed use, which is our largest zoning category in Burke County and happens to be rural and commercial together, he'd like to have that there to have the most flexibility for these four and a half acres. This is the future land use map. We always look at the future land use map when we're considering a zoning change, and it tends to track closely with the current zoning. So this is the portion here, and it's currently zoned for residential infill, but that portion would change to the rural kind of growth, rural mixed use growth, if approved. I would say this, the Blueprint Burke Strategic Plan supports residential infill, but also encourages the development of local businesses, particularly along major transportation corridors like US 64. As a usual occurrence with our zoning maps, you can expect a commercial enterprise on a state-maintained US highway. And so this mixed-use character of the area is there already, and this will add to that with expanded business. The Planning Board did review this item at their March meeting, and one neighbor spoke in favor of the change, and the Board recommended approval with a vote of 6-0. I can answer any questions for you.
All right. Thank you, Alan. Gentlemen, you've heard the information. Before I open the public hearing, any questions for Alan on this item?
Alan, can you go into a little more detail about residential infill? Are you talking R1, R2, R3?
Yeah. Let's go back, let's see here. That's the current zoning map. That's mostly R3 there, and then there's some areas with some other types nearby, R2, which is sort of a mixed residential, but permits double wides and single wides. The R3 is our most flexible zoning category. It allows a multitude of residential type uses, manufactured housing, single wide, double wide, modular stick build, of course, and then other community kind of activities can occur in an R3 zone as well, sometimes with a special use permit. The rural mixed use, which is the Tan area and surrounding areas nearby here, and this is our track again, so we're not far from it, but it does afford more mixing of uses on the same track or different tracks. Now, if there was a commercial use that was built in or added on, and you're adjacent to residential, you would put some zoning around that, I mean, some buffering around that to kind of screen the use from any negative impacts, in case the business was, you know, impactful to neighboring residential areas. But with the four and a half acre track, he's got space to kind of contain it on his own parcel. Does that help?
Looking to the left of the parcel that we're talking about, is that chicken houses I see there?
Yeah, there are some chicken houses up there. Let me see here.
So basically, what they're asking to do is not a big leap. They're wanting to go from R3 to rural mixed use.
I don't think so. Up the road, we have our own convenience site just a little further up in this area here. That's actually our convenience site down on US 64. This is industrial zone plus a general business zone property, and that's a welding facility there, kind of a welding, a really unique welding business in that area. Further down, we have other things here, but like I said, we had a, I noticed a use right about here that has always been sort of a non-residential use, like a factory site, but today used for farm supplies or sales for materials for folks who have farm activities at their own property. So we do have a mix of uses here. We find that in Burke County on these state roads, like I said, we tend to have a lot of commercial activities over the many years. And as you head back into town, you'll find even more and more as you, the density of that commercial or non-residential use shares the space with residential uses. So that's why we felt that is in keeping with the character.
Other questions? All right. Seeing here none, this time I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone here tonight speak to this item? If you will, please state your name and address.
Yes, sir. My name is Brian Smith. I own the property that Mr. Glyons was talking to you about at 2218 Geneva Drive. How this started, I built this building a couple of years ago, because, as he said, I'm a home builder, I've been for 29 years, and I needed a place to store my equipment, my skid steerers, trackhoe, stuff like that. And about two years ago, I hired a young man who turned out to be a really good mechanic to work for me. And since that's happened, I've had several other builders that are friends of mine that have inquired about him doing work on their equipment and stuff like that. And, I mean, we're set up to do that for our own stuff, and basically, I want to be in compliance with zoning, if I can be. And I requested residential mixed use instead of general business, because when I built that 40-by-60 building a couple of years ago, I did rough it in, so that sometime in the future, if possible, it may be converted into two townhouses. So I didn't want to request general business and then have to backtrack and go through the whole nine yards. Do you have any other questions for me?
Now that answered the question I had. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? All right. Seeing here none, anyone else speak to this item? Seeing here none, I'll close the public hearing at this time. Gentlemen, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve, to adopt ordinance number 2025-05 as relates to ZMA 2025-03 for the parcel corresponding to PIN 1781720579, to rezone a portion of set parcel from Residential 3, R3. parcel from Residential 3, R3, District to Residential Mixed Use, RMU, District, and to adjust the future land use map to rural mixed use low-density for this parcel. Further, the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the Blueprint Burke Strategic Land Use Plan acknowledges and supports the expansion of local businesses. The commercial activity will be in keeping with the mixed-use character found on US 64.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. And when you've heard the motion, all those in favor signify with the uplift in hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. This brings us to item number two, Community Development, zoning text amendment ZTA 2025-01. This will also be presented by Mr. Glyons tonight.
Thank you, Commissioners. We're bringing, staff's bringing this text amendment to you all for your consideration. It's to, the focus is removing extraneous graphics, streamline site plan standards, and also adjust the minimum building lot size. So that was something we've been working on for a little while. We were at your budget retreat. We made a presentation to you. The Board suggested that staff keep moving on this effort and bring something forward to you. Thing about zoning and text amendments, or zoning amendments, is they do take a little time, but the zoning code itself is meant to be a community document. It's meant to reflect the goals and the needs we have here in Burke County. So it's, to adjust it over time makes sense, and it's appropriate. So that's what we're here doing tonight. We're focusing on Article 3, which is lot size area. We have some sections that cover the entire document itself, just cleaning out graphics that really were never really activated fully. We have some changes to Article 5, which is, are the special use standards. We're trying to consolidate that for ease of use. And then Article 6, we're using that to develop the site plan standards for development in Burke County when they're non-residential. So those are the areas that I'll show you briefly. We're going to be taking out some of these graphics that are kind of throughout the current document and cleaning that up. There's another example of that. We're going to make adjustments to the lot size table. So currently, the lot size table addresses access to water and sewer, and if you have water and sewer, you can adjust your lot size. But if you have, but really, in reality, if you have sewer, that's the thing that's so rare in Burke County, and when we have it, where we have it is very important. So we want to try to acknowledge that to address housing shortage. And so if you have sewer available to your tract of land, we hope to reduce the size of the lots. If you only have water, we want to account for that, and if you must have an onsite septic system, we have enough land area to make that work as well. So we're kind of accounting for all those things, and we're adjusting that with this table that's in front of you now. Let's see here. So our, generally, our minimum lot size in Burke County would be half acre. That's without any public utilities. If you had public water, generally, you'd be able to make that work with a .4 lot size. If you had public sewer but no water, a .3 lot size, and if you can do public water and sewer, we could reduce that lot size down to a quarter acre. Another component of this is lot frontage. The challenge for developers is you can meet the lot size standard, but you still have to meet a frontage requirement, and currently, the frontage requirement across Burke County, regardless of zoning district, is 100 feet, but really, we could be a little closer than that. So we've provided a suggestion here that we would have a lot frontage of 70 feet. You could have a flag lot option for residential only, of a 20-foot lot in the front, and then the area is made up in the back, and then lots on a cul-de-sac would have a similar layout, which is usually the pie shape, be a 35-foot lot frontage. So we're trying to have some reasonable aspects brought to you all to make this a little bit better for building houses in Burke County. And section number five is the use standards for special uses, and they, we're not changing any of the specifics right now, except that they all show a, pretty much about eight of them show a long list of site plan requirements, but we already have site plan requirements in Article 7, so we don't need to reiterate those same requirements in this section as well, if we can refer to Article 7 to show them where to find the site plan requirements. This will reduce the bulk of the code and kind of make it a little more streamlined, easier to find the information. And that continues on. And finally, Article 6, this is kind of the makings of our Unified Development Ordinance, and we want to, it's not just non-residential design standards, it's really site and building development and design standards. So we want to kind of expand this out a little bit more, have special section for just commercial design, building design is fairly simple standards. We have, we're not really proposing to change those standards themselves, they're in there now, but just reorganizing this section. And we have the requirements for a commercial facade, industrial facade, very simple, 6.2, and then we'll pick up all these sections which we're taking out of 6.1, we have to reorganize them into this section, renumber them and give them their own topic, because they're all important, but they've been kind of buried under building design. So it kind of throws off the use of them and how useful they are. So we have access and parking, we have landscape standards, we have utilities at the site like lighting and other things. So that's how we're organizing this code. What I'd like to have a little more time is to work on some additional standards for cluster development. I believe we could support housing development in Burke County if we have better rules for cluster development, so we can, you know, protect the stream edges and sensitive environments, but give us some incentive for clustering the building lots, so we actually can create more lots and make that work better. So those are things we'll be working on in the future. I'll bring something back later this year. We want to have some changes to subdivision ordinance. We've kind of discussed some of those, and the home builders are interested, other folks, realtors, engineers, surveyors are all interested in the topic, so I hope to convene a group of folks to get, share ideas and get input from as we move forward. Can I answer any questions for you?
All right, thank you, Alan. Gentlemen, any questions for Alan before I open the public hearing? Seeing here none, at this time I'll open the public hearing. Do we have anyone here tonight to speak to this item? All right, seeing here none, I'll close the public hearing. Gentlemen, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2025-06 as it relates to ZTA 2025-01, amending the zoning ordinance, all sections, including the Table of Contents and Articles 1 through 9, to simplify certain graphics, streamline the site plan requirements, and provide relaxed regulations for lot sizes as outlined in Exhibit A. The Board of Commissioners finds the amendment to be reasonable and consistent with the Blueprint Burke Strategic Land Use Plan. The plan supports keeping the zoning ordinance up to date and streamlining requirements. A Burke County goal identified by the Board of Commissioners is to facilitate the development of additional housing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Gentlemen, you've heard the motion. All those in favor signify with the uplift in hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. All right, this brings us now to item number eight, informal public comments tonight. I'll recognize Madam Clerk at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have two citizens that have pre-registered to speak, Mr. Erskines. Mr. Erskines?
If you'll state your name, please, and address, and if you'll push that button one more time. Push that button one more time, please, sir. There you go. Perfect.
My name is Charles Erskine. People in the pool room at the Singer Center on Green Street are being unfair to me. The staff at the Singer Center and Margaret Pierce are using their job power to do the same thing. I tried to take my case to Brian Epley. I was told on Wednesday, May 30th, that he would call me on the last of that week or the first of the next week. As far as I know, that has not happened. I was barred from the Singer Center for 30 days for multivocal conversations, of which I did not start any of these. I was punished for taking up for myself. I fail to see how punishing me for what other people are doing to me is going to stop anything, and it has not. I request a hearing or trial for everyone that is involved, and witnesses are there. One last thing, we all pledge allegiance to the flag. Last three words, justice for all. Justice is what I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Erskine. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Anne Moncrief.
I pushed something on the right. Oh, it sounds like it's on. Good evening. My name is Anne Moncrief. I live at 1722 Robin Hood Drive in Morganton. I do not like crypto mining. Crypto produces no tangible product, employs virtually no one locally, and ruins the quality of life for those who must contend with noise pollution 24/7, 365 days a year. As noted in the Carolina Public Press, nine of North Carolina's mountain counties, including Cherokee, now have a ban on, or a protective ordinance against crypto mining, but by the time Cherokee County outlawed crypto in 2023, three mines were already in operation and not subject to the ban. Digital currency is gaining legitimacy in North Carolina. House Bill 920 aims to transform cryptocurrency into valid legal tender in the state. Another bill approved by the House allows North Carolina Treasurer Brad Briner to place up to 5% of the state's investments into crypto. "I'm concerned about crypto mines," Briner told Carolina Public Press. "If your business is not really employing people and just consuming a ton of cheap power, that's not the best business for us to recruit." On April 30th, 2024, Senate Bill 774 was introduced as an act to allow Henderson, Polk, and Rutherford Counties to prohibit cryptocurrency mining as an allowable use in any zoning district. This bill has never been put forward. Then, in December 2024, the Legislature passed Senate Bill 382, the omnibus bill. Section 3K.1 stated, "No local government initiated down zoning without consent of affected property owner." Forty-four states allow for a line item veto. North Carolina is not one of them. This article appears to effectively hamstring local and county governments from restricting certain industries that would potentially be harmful to residents and landscapes. How does a blanket ruling such as this allow for local government to have any autonomy? I urge the Burke County Commissioners to consider strengthening countywide zoning and noise ordinances to protect citizens and the environment. With strong countywide ordinances, municipalities would know the Commissioners have their back as they write their own. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moncrief. Madam Clerk?
That is all the cards that I have.
All right. All right, at this time, I'll close our public comment period, and we'll move to item number nine, consent agenda. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several items for consideration. Bear with me as I work through these. Item number one, at your pre-agenda meeting, Keith Lawson, the school CFO, made presentation for the school system's end of Q1 financial data, March 31, 2025. Those details are in your packet for review. Items two and three and four are actually from our clerks' items and their appointments and reappointments. Item two is a reappointment to the Adult Care and Nursing Home Committee. Item three is a reappointment to the East Burke Senior Center Advisory Board, and item four is a request from the City of Morganton to change their plat review officers. Item five is a resolution that would extend to the Recovery Court in Burke County. Chris is here with us, and you all heard the presentation. Pre-agenda, the total cost of that extension is estimated to be $216,000. That would be funded through opioid settlement dollars and ensure funding through December 31st, 2026. Item six, following the presentation from Brett and our Adult Protective Services Team at DSS, is a request to award a contract to Clayton Homes in the amount of $89,447.65, and that's what they paid for from those recovery state grant dollars following Hurricane Lee. Item seven is approval of the lottery application drawdown for our school, public school capital funds. That's $899,828, and that'll be applied to existing school debt. Item eight is approving the annual lease for the State Bliss Credit Union at our Foothills Higher Education Center. Item nine is approval of our JCPC county plan and funding for the upcoming year. Item 10 is from the Tax Department, is your collection report for April 2025. Item 11, also from the Tax Department, is your release and refund monthly report. Item 12, Mr. Phillips also presented at your pre-agenda, the financial information for the quarter ending March 31, 2025, for our Tourism Development Authority, and finally, for consideration similarly from Western Piedmont Community College, also the financial performance data for the end of Q1. Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions you or the Board may have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. Any questions on any of these consent items? Seeing here none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent item, agenda as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. All those in favor signify with the uplift in hand. Five to zero. This brings us to item number 10, items for decisions tonight. We have four items to consider. First one comes from Board of Commissioners Resolution opposing certain provisions of HB 675 due to adverse impacts on local fire departments, first responders in Burke County. This will be presented by Commissioner Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This bill has had a very storied life since it's, since it was proposed, most recently has been pulled out of committee, but I felt like, and I think this Board felt like in our pre-agenda meeting, that it's important to go on with this resolution, because there is a possibility that some of these provisions would show up in another bill, could even show up in a budget bill. So I would urge the Commissioners tonight to approve resolution opposing certain specific provisions in House Bill 675. Under consideration by the North Carolina General Assembly, House Bill 675 would require all emergency services EMS personnel, including volunteer emergency medical responders affiliated with local fire departments, to obtain a National Registry of Medical Technicians certification beginning January 1, 2026. The resolution highlights concerns about the bill's potential negative impact on Burke County's volunteer first responders, rural EMS coverage, and overall public safety. It requests that the Legislature provide exemptions, alternate pathways, or funding to support mitigate the burdens placed on rural EMS providers.
All right, thank you.
With that, I would make a motion to approve House Bill 675, or, sorry, resolution opposing House Bill 675.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. That's Resolution Number 2025-18, and we did review this previously. Any questions? All those in favor of the motion signify with the uplift in hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Item number two comes from Community Development, adoption of a resolution opposing HB 765 and the legislative preemption of local planning and zoning authority. This will be presented by Mr. Glyons.
Thank you, Commissioners. As you know, there is a proposed House Bill 765, which has a large number of changes that would affect the way planning and zoning elements are carried out throughout the state. As with any large bill, there are elements that are positive but others that are negative. The proposed resolution is adding, would be to add Burke County among the large number of communities that are passing resolutions to oppose the bill in its current form, and there is a resolution there for your consideration attached to this agenda item.
All right, thank you, Alan. Appreciate your work on this item. Gentlemen, any questions coming in on this item? All right, with that, I entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2025-19.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2025-19.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. All those in favor signify with the uplift in hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Item number three comes from our County Manager tonight, Storm Recovery Measures, North Carolina MOA for debris removal. MOA for debris removal. Mr. Manager, we'll hear you gladly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At your pre-agenda, we did a, and what I like to do is just quickly run through a more comprehensive update on Burke County's response to Hurricane Helene. I would remind you, at your last meeting, you passed a resolution delegating signatory authority to the Chairman and to myself, for many of the folks that are applying for hazard mitigation. What I'm going to ask for the board to consider this evening at the conclusion of this discussion is a resolution that would partner Burke County with North Carolina Department of Emergency Management specifically for private property debris removal, commercial property debris removal, and waterway debris removal, which are, I believe, other than the more long-term and maybe more complicated economic recovery efforts, the final components to our disaster recovery plan here in Burke County. So just a quick update from where we are as of now, and this is just statewide, but you can see tremendous amount of energy and effort has been expended, really statewide, to help the residents of North Carolina recover. You can see roughly $445 million approved over 159,000 households. When we drill down to more what it looks like here in Burke County on day 234, you can see, I'm very pleased there at the bottom of the slide, no one in Burke County is in temporary housing anymore. When I did this two weeks ago, there were still eight families. So we continue to see progress. We still continue to see advancements, and I think that's a very positive thing to point out. There's also, when you look at the amount of dollars that have been awarded through individual assistance in Burke County, I compared April 28th to May 12th, and you can see another $400,000 has been awarded through individual assistance. And that's direct to people that are in the recovery mode for their individual assets. Nothing's changed as far as our FEMA application for public assistance and the composition of that. We are, will be submitting an application that covers five categories. It'll take over $11.6 million. We're still finalizing that. Our, as you all know, primarily what's driving the cost for Burke County's recovery efforts has been right-of-way debris collection, but that's both individual and commercial. We feel like we've collected most of the material, but there's still reconciliation of what that total quantity is going to be and what that cost is going to be. But we followed our primary damage assessment. This was done only days after the storm, and I think that's really helped expedite much of the efforts that we've had. As you all know, it's not just been about following through with disaster recovery efforts like the donation center and the DRC. There's also been economic impact. Something that may not be thought of very often is the impact on horticulture and the impact on the agricultural community, and that's something that we continue to get at about. For example, folks that may have ornamental trees and those type things that are seven or eight years into their planting process before they're sold and that entire crop being destroyed, that really puts a significant impact on that property owner, on that business for some time. So we're trying to still get our head around that. It's also impacting the county's property tax base. As we all know, many of the properties that were damaged there in late September weren't fully repaired in January. So we try to be proactive about that. January 2nd, when our property tax listing forms were mailed for personal property, we also included a form for our taxpayers to complete that would identify any unimproved property that was damaged, therefore really impacting the value from the prior year, allowing our appraisers to evaluate that impairment. There were 695 of those returned, and that is just a, that's about four times higher than a normal year, and that equated to about $36 million in property tax value impairment directly related to the storm. When I look at debris removal, again, our primary function to this point has been right-of-way debris removal. We have partnered with, following the FEMA public assistance process, the county directly hired a contractor, Southern Debris Removal, SDR, who also partnered with the Wright Group, and two affiliates from the Wright Group are here with us tonight. They've done most of the boots-on-the-ground work for Burke County. And to this point, we've used three alternative debris sites. Two of those are in the process of being closed. As you'll see in just a moment, we've collected a little over 330,000 cubic yards of material. The fairgrounds is our first, was our first alternative debris site. We're very, very appreciative of that board and of that group of allowing us to do that. Really cuts down on the amount of hauling air, and it'll help us expedite the amount of time that it took to get, you know, the community looking better and safer and all those things. There were a few cleanup initiatives that had to be done before, as the contract states, the property has to be returned to its original status as before the storm. And so there was some grading work that had to be done, some grass seed that had to be re-sown, some fence repair that had to be done. Really, the only outstanding item is some impacts on the impervious surface there that they do the boxwood track on there at the fairground, but we're meeting with them tomorrow. We think we have a proposal that will finalize and help close that site out. East Fleming, again, was a very, very meaningful asset as we, the entire 15 or 20-acre site is paved. So through the winter months, when the ground was very saturated and it was hard to put 15,000, 20,000-pound equipment on it, it allowed us to continue running in those wet days. And so really appreciate that, that site. That contract expires Thursday. We're doing the walkthrough tomorrow and Thursday. Still getting mulch as of today, still getting some mulch hauled off of the side. But those two will be formally closed out, and then Marsh Trail out of the landfill will be our only remaining site as we continue to reduce the material and fully close out the right-of-way debris collection efforts. As I said, it ticked over 325, right at 328,000 cubic yards were collected. When we had, for a couple of weeks back on March 10th, we closed our debris collection hotline that you all were aware of. At that time, there were about 481 reported piles. What I can tell you is we've picked up all of those. There were a few that we've also picked up that weren't reported because people were unaware of the hotline and those type things. So we've continued to get, I would say somewhere between three and five phone calls a day for various property owners who have qualifying material, but this didn't get it registered. So we've continued to do that. We've done an extension with SDR and the Wright Group to make sure that they're still fully capable of going out and collecting that material. And was just told about some more potentially to knock, so that's why. But I do think we're in the very latter stages. We've fully negotiated, have signed agreements with all of our private gated communities, feel like we've pretty enough to close out all of those and get that material picked out, picked up. I mentioned earlier when I started that at your last meeting two weeks ago today, you took action on the hazard mitigation resolution authorizing our board chairman and myself to approve those applications once they come back from FEMA. Hazard mitigation really has three options, an elevation, a repair, and an acquisition. And that's just a picture of what an elevated application may look like. In Burke County, we had 18 applications. Each of these property owners now are individually working with the state to collect data points, things like surveys and appraisals, title searches, all of those things that would go into primarily acquisition because I think 14 out of the 18 will fall into that lens. Once all that information is collected, it'll be submitted to FEMA for review, and as properties are approved or not approved by FEMA, that will then come back to the county for those signatory approvals, and then it'll work through the process. But to this point, this board has done everything you can to expedite this process and make sure these homeowners have options available to them. So what I'm here tonight to get some guidance and some direction on from the board commissioners is waterway debris removal and private property debris removal slash commercial debris removal. You're aware that really there's been three options identified. The county could have continued to utilize a private contractor, contractors that had already been through the state procurement process that we can engage directly with, and those are going through. That procurement process is really ironed out during a period of non-emergency. So when emergencies happen, you're not stuck in this process of having to go through bidding and all this kind of stuff. You can have a direct engagement. And that really, again, we were collecting right-of-way debris in day three or day four after the storm, and that's because a lot of that legwork had been done by the state prior to that. Option two, and what many of our counties in western North Carolina, were a direct engagement, and again, through the State Department of Emergency Management with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And then most recently, a third option that is a direct partnership with the state in which they act as the property management group, as well as assuming liability of right-of-way entries, pulling regulatory permits, and then managing the cash flow component. We understand that both PPDR and CPDR and waterway are all higher risk and much more expensive than just right-of-way debris collection because you're handling the material more time, you're operating in more complex environments. The regulatory environment is obviously much more complex as we've seen with some of the counties that are already, you know, in this area of recovery. We have hired Debris Tech, which is the monitoring company that's been in Burke County since September, to fly only the Catawba River to give us some impact, some idea of, and when I say fly, I mean with drones, to give us some idea of the amount of material that may be in these waterways. Again, they only did a certain stretch of the Catawba River, and you can see the estimated cost was about $876,000. And generally, how that works is they go to potentially impacted or at-risk public infrastructure, they go up the stream and down the stream, trying to identify material that may be moved, and then they apply that at scale to come up with these estimates. PPDR is a similar project. I know that we've talked about it many times. It can be vegetation, it can be C and D, it can be a variety of material that's actually located on a homeowner's piece of personal property. There's an intake application process and evaluation, and ultimately, again, I think the final approval would come from FEMA. Each of these would have to have a right-of-entry negotiation with the property owner, and that's another component of what the county and this board commissioners gave direction back in March on looking for an alternative path that did not put the county as the project manager. And again, I think those were the three primary compartments, trying to avoid legal risk, project management exposure, and financial cash flow exposure. I think that there's a higher risk with PPDR and waterway, in my opinion, for reimbursement than in right-of-way, primarily because if you do, at least in my opinion, if you do collect material that's then not deemed appropriate as a hazard to public infrastructure by FEMA, there's a potential that that's not a reimbursable cost. And we just think that even if FEMA does that in a prospective proactive way, that that presents a little bit more inherent risk, and this board gave us direction to look for alternatives. And that's what I'd like to get some direction from you all tonight, and there's an MOA, Memorandum of Understanding, in your packet that we've talked about, that would partner Burke County with the State Department of Emergency Management. We have three representatives from the state here with us tonight if the board has direct questions for them, Joe, Bob, and Garrett, and all of them have really got to know me pretty well in the last couple of weeks, and I appreciate them very much and their advice and their help. But we have been through several renditions and several versions, and I do believe that the version that is in front of you tonight would be the quickest, most efficient way to mobilize cleanup in Burke County without any financial, legal exposure, or project management requirement on behalf of Burke County government. And there's both the agreement, and then there's also an addendum that you can call a rider for you to consider. And, Mr. Chairman, the request is to consider approval, denial, or modification of either of those documents. Again, I'm happy to try to answer questions. We have many of the pioneers behind the program here to ask questions, and also the Wright Group, who is the local boots-on-the-ground contractor, subcontractors that are doing most of the work. So if there was questions about mobilization or asset inventory, which we've covered with them, how quickly can you get here? What are the assets you have to do this work? You know, those type things, I thought it would be helpful if they were here also. So happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Gentlemen, any questions on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I do have just a question or two. Of course, we've all had this and had an opportunity to read it. Initially, we had voted, of course, to move forward with Army Corps, and some things have changed. And I think, in my understanding, that what's going to take place if we go forward with this process, the debris collection is going to be 1,000 feet above and below structures? Is that bridges? Is that buildings?
Any, my understanding, and again, I think that all of that's governed by the FEMA public assistance perspective, but any at-risk public infrastructure, that the county will be required per the MOA to designate someone to help work with and identify those components. So likely, our emergency management division and our incident management team will work with the state to identify any component of public infrastructure. Could be a water treatment plant, could be a bridge. I think bridges are the most common because they cross waterways and you can get to them easily and go upstream and downstream. I don't know, I've been told 1,000 feet as a rule of thumb by our monitoring firm. I've inquired as to that, and I've been told that there is no hard rule. They will go up the stream and down the stream to the extent that there's material to collect. And with the understanding, and I know you know this, but if that were to come dislodged at any point and go downstream, it could create public safety or public infrastructure harm. That's my understanding, and if I need any clarification, these gentlemen are the ones that are actually doing, you know, the proposal here.
Gentlemen, could you give us any idea of how quickly you might mobilize and what kind of mobilization we might expect to see?
Do you want to come up here?
Good evening. My name is Joe Stanton. I'm Assistant Director of North Carolina Emergency Management. I oversee the recovery for emergency management for the state. In this operation, the timeline that we're operating in would be fairly quick since you've already engaged a contractor to get started. It has already done a lot of your pre-work. We're pretty much, and you have contractors that are ready to go, we're pretty much ready as, you know, as soon as possible. Our goal is to get this debris removed as fast as possible. We don't have to put it back out to bid like other contractors would. We wouldn't have to then source it. We, most of this, if it has gone through FEMA, has to be approved, but we work very closely with FEMA on a day-to-day basis. My office is next door to the Federal Coordinating Office. I'm the Deputy State Coordinating Officer for this as asked. So we're going to move at expedited pace. That's the goal of this. It's also the goal of this to save money. We want to be very prudent to the taxpayers in North Carolina and into you. And so that's our purpose in designing this. This is something that in the past we probably wouldn't have done, but because of the extent of the debris and the need to get this debris removed in an expedited manner so that we can get on with recovery, that's why this program came to be. And so I hope that answers your question.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anything else, gentlemen? All right. Hearing that, gentlemen, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve an NC MOA and authorize the chairman to execute the final version of the agreement between NC Emergency Management and Burke County to expedite debris removal assistance related to the tropical storm Helene, subject to review or revision by the county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. All those in favor signify with the uplift in hand. Madam Clerk, that's five to zero. Gentlemen, thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate what you're doing.
Yes.
And we look forward to continuing this progress. Item number four tonight also comes from our County Manager, presentation of recommended budget for fiscal year 2526 and scheduling a public hearing. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chairman, really excited to have the opportunity to present this budget this evening and follow this up by asking you all to schedule a public hearing. I would point out that following tonight's meeting, this budget will be available online. It'll also be at our senior centers, our libraries, and several other public spaces that I'll list later for anyone in the community who wishes to come and have a full copy of the budget and review that ahead of the public hearing next month, which will be, I believe, June 16th. I do think that we're delivering a product that each of us can be proud of. I want to say first, a really humble appreciation to the board commissioners, the amount of time that each of you have, both individually and collectively as a board, and policy setting and direction have put into, you know, helping develop your priorities and also giving feedback to staff is not taken for granted. I do think that it was a collective I do think that it was a collective effort without question, and again, just the amount of effort and trust that you all have provided has been really, really meaningful to staff. Certainly also thank our budget performance team, our finance team with Margaret and her team. We've all put a lot of effort into the scientific component of the budget. But I just want to, I like to think as we're talking about setting our operational plan, our work plan for the next 12 months for 700 full-time employees and 25 operating departments, there's not a more critical point of our year than the planning stage of what it is that we're going to try to accomplish. Many of the things that Alan just talked about with housing and innovation and inducement of that, whether it's water sewer development, infrastructure development, or regulatory changes that help streamline that process, those are all components of our budget. And I think what we're able to present is for next year is something that's going to be, going to be presented at a reduced taxing rate to try to recognize much of our year this year has been dominated by storm and disaster recovery. We're on day 232, as I recall, and there are folks that are still, you know, trying to get their house back. To, I had an email today from a grandmother who's housing six or seven grandchildren, and she had inquiries about the housing mitigation efforts. I think that there's companies that still haven't reopened, which means there's people who haven't gone back to work, and I think this board's sensitivity to that economic long-term damage has been real. So I think the effort to try to produce a budget and leave money in taxpayers' dollars is something that I've certainly understood as a priority and am very proud that we're able to deliver. We just noted on the housing component about some regulatory refinement, trying to alleviate the housing pressure in Burke County, and lots of ways to do that, but supply and demand and economics drive costs. And so we have to figure out a way, at least to the extent we can leverage public policy to help induce that. And then lastly, I think that we've taken care of all of our operational capital priorities, and I'd like to try to walk you through that. Each of you have a full-blown budget document in front of you, and I'll try to hit some of the high marks. But really, year three for us, this is year three for me and Burke County developing the budget, and in year one, I introduced this idea of React, Rebuild, Rethink. Burke County Government as an organization, as a corporate entity in 2022, 2023, was really struggling. 33% turnover, stagnant capital, outdated technology, very siloed operational departments, not a team effort, not people trying to find how to synchronize together and produce the best possible outcome for our citizens, really a lack of strategic vision at the board level without a guiding strategic plan. And React was all about trying to reset and re-stabilize those efforts. Year two was about rebuilding. Let's try to put a comprehensive capital improvement plan together. Let's try to get some movement in our human capital indicators. Let's try to move towards an organization that has purpose and values. And year three in this rethink is a budget that's presented, I think, with the idea of without dynamic change. There's not dynamic change. There's not a new program or a new idea or a new concept in this year's budget, but it's how do we do all the things we're already doing? How do we do them better? This idea of, it's a principally driven concept of the aggregation of marginal gains and saying, if we get 1% better in all the things that we're already doing, we can make a fundamental difference in the outcome of our community. And that could be housing, that could be community health and opioid settlement, that could be the places where our citizens come to conduct their business for county from a capital facility perspective. And I think that's what's so important about your strategic plan is that it really aligns this idea of strategic vision and policy setting with the opportunity to align that to your priorities through the budgets and connect both the transactional and the transformational components of our budget. Your strategic plan, as you all know, we spent two days, two full days, March 2nd, March 3rd, revisiting your priorities of the same five focus areas exist in the 2526 strategic plan as in the prior year, but you do have some additional top priorities. And we define top priorities as when the commissioners go through your exercise, and it's something that there's a consensus amongst all five board members. And you can see here, these were the top areas that we tried to make sure were included and fully developed in the budget process. Economic development, product development was a huge component of that. Continued partnership with the Hickory Regional Airport and the Tea Hanger Project was something that we wanted to stay committed to. Having a little bit more control in our cost escalation as it relates to handling of household waste, it's 70,000 tons a year of household waste that are handled in Burke County, and at $37 a ton, a 5% increase can have really impactful costs. And really, at this point, I think this board's recognized we don't have any control over that. So exploration of an MSW sale, maintaining our spend policies and your equity policy for fund balance there at 25% ensures that we're managing the fiduciary responsibilities that we have in a really predictable way. Our shell building, which is well underway, implementing components of your public safety strategic plan, and then moving towards the development of a citizens academy so that there's a direct interface and an opportunity for anyone in the community who wants to be involved in county government to do so. And I think that's where I would start is just by saying, we really see this budget as an opportunity to find the intersection between being prepared with investments that we've made in the first two years. I think the theme for this year's budget for me is capitalizing on prior-year investments. There's no doubt in my mind that without some of the areas that this board has supported and endorsed in prior years, in the last few years, things like EMS billing and our wellness pharmacy formulary redesign, the things that were in this budget would not have been able to be accomplished. And I think that that's what we want to focus about and see the budget as a tool to accomplish things, not just as a compilation of arithmetic and numbers and spending. It's more of what are the areas, what are the things we're trying to accomplish, and how are we going to get those done? And using this filtration process of priority setting and trying to align that with resources. We know that there's always going to be more goals, and there is resources to obtain those, but we want to make sure that we have a process that recognizes cause and effect. If you invest here, this will be the outcome. And we want to be able to show not only our board but our community that those investments do generate a return. It'd move us across the spectrum of good, better, and best. I thought I would start just by highlighting some of the accomplishments that this process has yielded over the last couple of years and things, priorities and policy areas that this board has endorsed. Number one, investment in the workplace culture, purpose, and values, and I think that pairs well with number two, which was the full implementation of the first-ever comprehensive pay and classification study in Burke County. So really, if you think about our people being about 75% of our total budget, and certainly the tip of the spear as it relates to touching citizens and service delivery, whether you come into the senior center or the tax office or the go-to-the landfill, the people delivering that service are what's going to, in some way, I think, you know, make that as high-performing as we possibly can. And we had a really siloed organization with high turnover, very low tenure, more than a third of our employed workforce had been here less than two years, and that lack of institutional knowledge and practice, I think, really impacted our service. And so the investment there, I think, has made a difference. You've also increased your public education support by 25% over three years, which I think is really unprecedented and incredible. I'll talk about that more in just a second. Housing study, which gave you many recommendations, water sewer infrastructure development to support housing, some of the regulatory refinement that we're working on now, all recommendations out of that. This year, you endorsed, conducted, and have completed a public safety strategic plan, which has yielded results. You've used a master facility plan developed by an architectural team, mostly architects, to draft your capital improvement plan. And generally, as from a philosophical perspective, we've seen an endorsement of trying to operate with more efficiency and more of a lean, what I would call a pull mentality versus push. So we pull things through the product. Purpose and values has really gone a long way in defining our culture. We want to have a culture of high performance. We want to avoid those operational silos, have cross-departmental collaboration. And I like to tell our team, you can't arrive at where you're going if you don't know where that is. And even though we're 25 very separate departments, 28 when you include our elected officials, we have one common purpose, one synchronized good, and we can operate under one value system that will not only deliver better service to our community but also at a lower cost. And I think we've seen that. That also gives our people, I think, generally folks like to be a part of something bigger than themselves. And when you pair that with market-driven wages and some of the fringe benefits that we've been able to accomplish over the last three years, we've really seen three years in a row of some of the best talent retention metrics the Burke County Government's seen, which does a couple of things. Number one, it reduces our number of open positions. In county work, much of the work, the inflow, the supply, is flatlined, meaning no matter how many social workers you have employed, the number of intake calls are going to be the same, right? The demand there is kind of flat. So when you have 97 openings like we had in 2022, that work's just being divided amongst fewer people. And over time, that really has a morale decay, and it really, again, just prevents people from being able to take a day off or have those breaks that is really critical at times. So I think, again, all this goes back into culture, but being able to have higher talent retention reduces our number of open and vacant positions. It also sees here, the bottom of this graph is showing our workforce as it is today by tenure, and this is percentage of our workforce, this is how long they've worked here. And what I draw your attention to is we're starting to shift people to the right on the chart, right? So I like to tell people, if I call 911, I want the paramedic with six years of experience versus six days. And it doesn't mean that the person with six days is not incredibly talented, they're not well-trained, they're not a huge part of our team, but in concept, the person who's been practicing for six years has seen more, practiced more, and I generally have a higher level of comfort. When you're turning it over at 35% a year, you never get to the six-year person, and I think that's what we're beginning to see. Education funding here, I mentioned that you've seen a 25% increase. Two years ago, you were the 99th, you ranked 99th in the state of North Carolina in local education funding, and that's on a per-people basis from county allocation. It's about $16.3 million. You've been able to increase that from 99th, from a ranking of 99th to 86th, and that's very meaningful. That, again, cause and effect concept. What we've seen is Burke County is the only county school district in our region that's seen a decrease in classroom size, meaning the ratio between teachers and students. Burke County Public Schools has actually seen that improve when other school districts have seen that grow. We've also seen, for the first time in more than a decade, teacher supplements be able to be reinstated, which means that teachers here are paid, in addition to their state salary, it's kind of a local component that creates differentiation between Burke County's local education authority versus any other one in the state. And the question is, does that level of funding, whether it's into athletics or cultural arts, or the number of teachers we have, does it have an impact on student outcome? Because that, I think, is the, at the end of the day. And these are just two quick data points amongst many that we found that I think demonstrate that Burke County Public Schools, given the level of funding, there is a trend. The first one I hear, I'll just put up for an illustration, is is there a relationship between the amount of funding from a local county to a school district with the number of guidance counselors, and do guidance counselors have an impact on chronic absenteeism? And generally, what you found is the lower funding folks, school districts had fewer of those peer support guidance counselors and higher absenteeism. And when you have higher absenteeism with lower funding, there's an inverse relationship between kids that are finishing school that are proficient in math and reading. So those are examples of why does local funding matter to the school district and how, what are the kind of offsets that it often can demonstrate to produce the outcomes that we want from a workforce readiness component and children that are ready to enter, whether it's higher education, military workforce, they're prepared. Another example, last year, you all funded a public safety strategic plan. One of the data points out of that was delay dispatch. We were over three minutes, so when a call comes in and I'm on one, the dispatch should be going out in less than 60 seconds, and we were over three minutes. Lots of reasons for that diagnosed in the plan, but the point is, because of what you all commissioned, we've taken those results, and we've seen a significant decline in the delay between a phone call coming in and public assets rolling towards the scene to try to help. And that is significant. We're well below a minute right now, which I'm incredibly proud of. Capital and planning, again, I mentioned that there was a stagnation to our capital plan, and so the facility master plan, along with this board's endorsement of a five-year capital improvement program, has done a couple of things. It's given you a multi-year outlook. It's got your three major projects in motion now, EMS headquarters, animal services, and improvements to our courthouse. Our HRC building has already began moving forward as well. We interviewed architects last week. Be prepared to present that to the board at your next meeting. You've approved debt management, fund balance policies. Those are, think about those as guardrails and parameters that we have to operate inside of, as well as rolling stock in what I would call out-year non-major capital. And then lastly, just cause and effect and deliverables from prior-year budgets, trying to reduce pressure off of the property tax rate and look for other ways to fund governmental functions. And this idea of an enterprise fund, which we all know are supposed to be self-sustaining, meaning revenue exceeds its expenditure and pays for direct costs, indirect costs, future capital financing costs. In the past, that wasn't happening, and so we've tried to take, as you can see over the last three years, a more direct initiative to do that, to turn that around. And thankfully, we've been able to do it in both water sewer and solid waste, which, again, prevents that allocation of general fund dollars, one, to those enterprise funds, therefore taking pressure off of the property tax rate. And I think that relief of pressure has been seen, if this board is supportive of this year's budget, as a reduction to in the last three years of that rate. So I'll leave you with this before I jump into the kind of the nuts and bolts. I do think that Burke County is in a strong position. I think that our purpose, values, and direction is clear. I think that our human capital indicators and our performance metrics, department by department, are strong. Our fund balance and debt ratios compare very favorably. We have been able to maintain a lower taxing rate, and we're in the process of implementing your strategic plan and your capital improvement plan, all with what I would consider a purpose-driven concept. Now, all that being said, there are challenges that we continue to face. We're seeing, just like any other company in the whole world, we're seeing increasing operational costs. I'll talk about that just in a moment. Things like contracted services, labor competition, medical inflation. As you know, we're self-insured, self-funded wellness plans for, we got about 900 covered lives, employees, and spousal dependent. It's about an 8.3, almost $8.4 million fund. So when medical inflation is trending nationally at 7%, 8%, even if we come in at 5% or 6%, like we did this year, there's still significant requirement to invest additional cost or to reduce benefits to our employees. We've also seen risk management costs, even though Burke County's had just unbelievably favorably risk management claims data. So if you look at our claims data, you know, it's declining year over year, yet our property liability workers' comp costs keep going up, and it's because of wildfires out west or tornadoes in Kentucky and those tragic events. But we know nationally, there's only a few major stop-loss carriers, and when they are paying out, and just like what we've seen in western North Carolina, billions of dollars, those costs are then passed on to their customers. So we're experiencing that too. We've had stagnant economic development. We know that our top 10 taxpayers are the same as they were a decade ago, and we've not had a major economic development announcement in Burke County in some time. Our tax base has been stagnant for 15 or 20 years, and we've really struggled to reinvent ourselves following the exodus of furniture and textiles. We also are continuing to see two other really challenging things. One is a cost shift and a liability shift from the state to county government, and that's continuing to kind of happen, and just the understanding that we're accepting new costs or the erosion of revenue, historic revenue functions. And we're just seeing slowing consumer spending, and I'll talk more about that in just a minute. But sales tax is our second-largest revenue source, and this is the first year and probably the last decade that we've seen no growth. So typically, even in a period of rising costs and inflationary impact, the pack of crackers costs a little bit more, so there's a little bit more sales tax. So even if the amount of spending stays flat, the amount of sales tax goes up because it's a percentage of the price. So in a period where we've seen, you know, close to 4% inflation, for sales tax to be flat is really a net relative decline, and that's what we're seeing. Some examples of cost increase, what I would call cost of doing business included in the 2526 budget. Number one, there's a 6% renewal for our employee health insurance costs, and that does provide that employees are not experiencing a cost share. That's about $525,000. The state treasurer's office has once again raised retirement rates. That's not an optional thing. That's a decision that's controlled in Raleigh, and we are a member of the local government Employee Retirement System. It's about $319,000. Foster kinship placements, those are things where foster children are placed with kinships. Historically, those haven't been paid. I think it's good policy that they are because they are, obviously, what's best for the child is to be placed in kinship care. But legislation was passed last year requiring payment now, and the county's 50% share of that's about $88,000. Other things like, as I mentioned, property notability, PAP state expense, that's for public health, and EMS or Rebuild Medicaid, that's an audit that's required, the fixed fee, jail medical increase, just the cost of providing basic medical medication distribution and those type things in our jail. And Microsoft Enterprise, that's the basic function of using PowerPoint, Excel, those type things where the cost is just increasing. Here's some other examples, and I know that's kind of challenging to see, but I've tried to put up the last couple of years of what I would just call commodity expenditures for things that things that have changed. And you can see some are up, some are down. I'm very pleased, things like contracted services, things that we used to outsource, now we're insourcing. The major change there is tax revaluation. So in the past, the county had a contract for tax revaluation. We're now doing that in-house. That saves us quite a bit of money. Other things like food, primarily food in the jail and meals on wheels. The cost of food, as we all know from our own experiences at the grocery store, has gone up significantly. Other places, we've been able to see some pretty significant decline, like M&amp;R vehicles, M&amp;R equipment, where we've, I think, made some investments in the last couple of years that have had some cost avoidance measures in the upcoming budget. So there's certainly some ebb and flow. I think that the narrative is we're trying to control what we can control, automate, leverage technology where we can. And I think those are all components of what have made our budget development process very, very, very positive. So our priorities were structurally balanced and priority-based. We've talked a lot about that, improving service levels. I think we've accomplished that, evaluating and improving efficiencies across departmental collaboration and transparency and consideration. I mentioned the amount of time that this board has put into helping develop the budget, giving direction. All of that started back in January. There's been a multitude of one-on-one meetings, group meetings, policy-setting retreats, different points during the program where we're having legislative discussions or revenue forecast, just a variety of things. And again, I just wanted to point out that really our budget process is a year-round process, even though it more formalizes there in January through June. I'm jumping into revenue at this point, but really our revenue forecasting, I would tell you, is both recession-ready, but also trying to measure what's going to happen economically. Again, I talked about tax impairment from the storm. I talked about flattening of sales tax and consumer spending. There's development fees. There's a lot of components of our revenue portfolio that are dependent upon how the economy is performing really at a macro level, and most of those things outside of our control. But they do go into the principles of how we forecast. And so what I would tell you is that we have a very intentional, but recession-ready and responsible approach to forecasting. I'll talk more about that as I move through it. We rely on data, and we're trying to diversify our revenue portfolio as much as we can. Again, relieving the pressure on the property tax rate, recognizing other revenue streams that may be predictable and sustainable and sufficient. So there's things going on in the market. I won't spend a lot of time on this. This is just from Moody's, and it's showing CPI over time and how the feds are moving the rate. And we all know that that rate, you know, it really impacts investing and borrowing and home purchasing and all those type things. We're looking at defaults being as high as they've been on revolving loan for the, revolving debt for the first time, really back all the way to 2013, 2014. And so there's a variety of what I would consider economic indicators. The 10-year yield curve, when people can invest short-term and get a better rate of return than investing long-term, that tells you that people are unsure about the market. Those are examples. But I've tried to compare 2024, 2025 back up to '07, kind of before the big deep recession. And what I would tell you is, I think that there's reason to be optimistic. There's certainly some volatility and some uncertainty, and we should take a very cautious approach. But at the same time, I think that there's also reason to be optimistic about stability and some predictability. So for example, manufacturing, the industry continues to be the biggest part of our labor force. It also continues to be the biggest part of our GDP here in Burke County. And this is a supply chain index that measures really the performance of manufacturing in the country. And so the idea is, anytime this index is above 50, supply chain is really fluid and manufacturing sector is growing. So it gives you confidence about jobs and confidence about their ability to continue to invest in the tax base and those type things. When it's below 50, there's some uncertainty there, and it's more demonstrated of a contracting market. And yeah, clearly, it's been up and down. This goes all the way back to 1950, but you can see the ebbs and flows. And where we are when we pulled this data was right at 50. So the market is even unsure, but I don't see a declining, you know, reason to just be, you know, concerned or to fear the worst. When I look at home sales, this is nationally, housing price index of both volume and price are, have certainly downsized since that peak that we saw in '22, '23 that was largely driven by COVID. But if you compare where we are now, over time, all the way back, this is all the way back to 2008, nothing too alarming there. The number of building permits, again, where we are now, maybe down a little bit, but still, if you compare it historically, there's still permits being issued. This is in North Carolina in totality. We'll drill down on Burke County in just a moment. And again, the idea is revenue development and development and permits fees are a big part of our budget. This is directly from MLS here in Burke County. You can see this year, about a 6.5% increase in the average list price of a home. A couple of things I'd point out is, last year, this was 25% from '23 to '24. So we've seen a slowing. Homes are sitting on the market a little bit longer, and people are accepting a little bit more percentage. But we also know from a policy perspective, this data continues to tell us that people are at the average list price of 439 and a 6.5%, 7% rate probably prices out the average homeowner in Burke County, and that's a real challenge. When we forecast out the number of permits that we'll issue this year, we expect that to be around 244. We did 183 through the first three quarters. This is just new single-family homes, and you can see how that compares to prior years. So again, down just a little bit, but nothing alarming. We also know that we have some units that are planned. We look at housing in concept, in development or in construction. About 350 units are in construction. That'll add to the tax base. That'll also add to available housing, hopefully releasing some of the pressure and slowing some of the price growth. We know that our Business Park units, their expansion is well underway and scheduled to be completed this summer, as well as the industrial shell building that we are working on along with BDI. So those are reasons to be optimistic about some tax base improvement, as well as the airport T-hanger projects, which we've seen grow from about $40 million to about $120 million over the last three and a half years with new personal aircraft being stored there. So I share all that to say, I think there's enough data and enough things in motion to maintain, you know, again, a recession-ready, responsible development of our revenue side, but also be optimistic. And that's kind of, that's the story for this year's budget. Total revenue is about $116.2 million. That's a 2.8% growth. Very proud that we've been able to arrive at a revenue portfolio that only has a 53% dependency on property tax. Again, the lower that dependency, the less volatile you are in your rate setting as you have things that you're trying to manage and defend. You can see here how our revenue portfolio breaks down compared to prior years. The change is about $3.1 million. $599,000, right at $600,000 came from property tax. Sales and services, about $727,000. Social services is growing by $689,000. And remember, social services is largely reimbursed. It's a quasi-state-county function. So most of that revenue gain is staff doing a, what I would consider a better job of identifying costs that we maybe haven't captured in the past, applying for that reimbursement and pulling that down. So again, when people work on a social services program, we track that time, we track the direct costs, and depending on the program, we get a percentage of that reimbursed from the state. But it's up to us to identify those things and make sure that we're, what I would call maximizing that revenue source. Investment income is another area of highlight. We budgeted $325,000. And you can see the rest of the portfolio as we move down. I would remind you that the occupancy taxes all flow through. So, you know, that is budgeted $200,000 higher than last year, but all that will flow through to the TDA minus a small 1% or 2% collection fee the county has. Of the $727,000, that's a big part of that $3.1 million growth. Here's kind of the breakdown. The vast majority of that's in this EMS billing function. We budgeted $6.1 million in total collections next year. That's about where we are today. I'll tick over 6.1 today, so I think, still think that's a conservative number. But certainly, that area of policy has been one that's really produced some fruit and provided some additional revenue. And I would remind you that the vast majority is coming through either public or private insurance. Very little of that is in private pay. So I think that's a, I think that's a really good thing. Recommended tax rate, as I said earlier, is balanced at 55.5 cents. One of the big parts of that is our collection rate has continued to grow and be better. We're balanced at 98.5% this year, which is a little bit lower than what we expect. I would say that prior year collections, as you do a better job every year of current year collections, prior year collections become more difficult. That's something that I think that we're aware of and monitoring. So what we budget for collecting in prior years, if there's a smaller amount and more complex challenges with collecting that, that's an area of emphasis that we've got to really focus on. Our property tax base next year has grown by 1.96%. I think the purpose of this optic is to show that there's largely been a high level of stagnation from, in value growth from year to year. This was our revale year, and then three years following that, it too has remained moderately flat. 1.96%, it's about $212 million in total value change. Again, that's roughly $600,000 in revenue change. Coincidentally, one of the biggest areas of potential growth next year is back in motor vehicles. We think our top 10 taxpayers next year will be the same, largely unchanged for a while. We're hopeful that we can recruit either existing industry expansion or new industry and over time begin to have a little bit more change in this chart. So here, we're just looking at your total tax base next year. We're moving, this year currently, about $10.8 billion. Again, you can see the change from revale from 19 to 25, but the orange line here is just indicative to demonstrate that our tax base has seen some growth, but largely at the pace of inflation, which doesn't really impact our ability to have purchasing power. One of the things that we talked about earlier was that average list price for a home, something else that's impacting our tax base and that we should just be aware of is that our sales ratio continues to decline. You're all aware of when we do revaluations, which is a mass reappraisal, that goes back up to 100 where we align tax values with market values. We did that in '23, and it's been a pretty substantial decline since that point. So two things that means, one is we'll be mandated to do a countywide revaluation in January 1 of 2027. And again, as I mentioned earlier, that's one of the savings that we've seen in contractual services, that we're now doing that in-house versus paying a company about $28 per improved parcel to do that. But it also tells us, and this is, I think, a predictive analytic, for the 21 or 22 counties across North Carolina that are doing revaluations this year, the average value change is 57.5%. So we, if things continue, we should, we should expect those values to create a larger gap between market and what we have on the tax books. Motor vehicles are a, also about 10% of our total tax base. So how those valuations are performing is a big component of our estimates. I would remind you that the state of North Carolina, through the Tag and Tax Program, manages, it's called the North Carolina Vehicle Tax System, but they manage these appraisals, collections and so forth. One thing to keep in mind is that we have, back in 2022 and 2023, through COVID, with the shutdown of many of the large manufacturers, disrupted the supply chain and really drove the value and the cost of both new vehicles and used vehicles through the roof. And so for the last two years, we've seen a significant decline in value, also corresponding to a significant decline in revenue. So if you go from 510 to 467, you're talking $500,000 a month or $600,000 a year in lost revenue, just because Ford and Chevrolet and Toyota are now making cars again and an ample supply to meet the demand. But that's something that we expect to continue for next year. I mentioned consumer spending. Article 39 is the first one cent of sales tax, largely unrestricted revenue source. And this orange line shows year-over-year change. So you can really see over the last couple of years, we've seen slowing growth. So this year, it still grew by 11.5%, but that was less than the 20% growth we've seen here. And we've seen, so in the year that we're in, largely flat for Article 39, 16 hundreds of a percent change, and you're talking about on a $10 million revenue. So moving into next year's budget, we've kept that flat. We've not budgeted any growth at all for Article 39. The same is true for 40 and 42. 39 is a collected point of sale, so that's the sales that have happened here in Burke County that are then refunded to Burke County. Article 40 and 42 are a statewide collection and redistributed to all counties in North Carolina based on your percentage of the total population. They're growing a little bit higher, 1.7%, still less than inflation. But that, to me, that's rural counties really benefiting from the Charlotte market, Raleigh, Greensboro, Greenville. But regardless, from a 2526 budget program, all three articles of sales tax have been budgeted flat from the current year with no growth anticipated. Want to update the board on Medicaid Hold Harmless. We talked about this last year, but all the way back to 2012, there was a state revenue source that the county has received consistently that was an algorithm calculated between the North Carolina Department of Revenue and Health and Human Services that intended to replace a repealed Article 44 sales tax in exchange for the state taking on a higher proportion share of Medicaid, local Medicaid cost. And that's provided, again, this revenue source for Burke County for the last 10 years. Something in the 21, 22 and 23, 24 year created substantial cost increase for the state and local Burke County Medicaid cost, which indirectly created a revenue shortfall for the county because the calculation is, what is the amount of collected sales tax? Article 44, just like the other articles we've talked about, has continued to slow. And local Medicaid cost went up 20% in one year. The corresponding product was a $1.6 million revenue shortfall, and we expect that to continue as well. We did get some preliminary numbers. The problem is they don't release it till April the year that you're in. So you're largely forecasting this unknown because you don't know what the Medicaid costs are going to be next year, nor do you know how Article 44, that repealed sales tax, will perform. And there's no indicators. So similar to last year, we budgeted this to be flat for next year, anticipating that those two inputs will largely be consistent. So one of the things, when you consider the loss in motor vehicle revenue, the impairment of our tax base and other Medicaid Hold Harmless, for example, other revenue shortfalls, one of the ways that we've been able to make up those gaps is through investment income. Back in 2022, we reported $63,000 in investment income, and I think there's been some policy and strategies that, along with growing rates, and we all know that, that have led to a pretty substantial increase this year. We're expecting to collect about $3.4 million. We did budget substantially less than that. I don't think that it's wise or healthy to balance your budget this year on anticipated interest income. You can't control rates, and if you, if you balance on that in the future and something changes, then you're trying to come up with revenue. So in next year's budget, there's $825,000 budgeted in interest income. We think will far exceed that. And that, an example of exceeding or over-collecting that revenue would help offset any appropriation of fund balance that's included in our original budget document. Last couple of components here, we'll jump into the expenditure side, but both health and DSS are similar to last year. I mentioned that we, we saw about a $675,000 increase in social services revenue, largely because of administrative cost drawdown. Public health's total revenue was down just a little bit because there was an AA, an administrative agreement, a grant from the state that was included last year. Clinical billings are up $50,000. The AA that they lost also had a corresponding expenditure. So that, that net-net number for what local cost is was largely unchanged, meaning the revenue declined, but so did the expenditure when you compare it to 2024, 2025. And you can see there from 2.3 to 2.1, but again, there's a corresponding expenditure decrease as well. There's a variety of recommended fee changes in this year's budget, primarily in building inspection for skilled trades, moving from $75 to $100. And then in environmental health, the different components, all going up by $25, $25. And we've done some regional peer analysis that's in your budget book for review. We've compared population, we've compared geographic, we've compared even to median income to make sure that these fee changes, which we do not take lightly at all, are fair and consistent, and we believe that they are. We believe that doing these incrementally every couple of years prevents having to do big swaths when you get really, really far behind. And all of these are cost recoupment strategies that also, again, help alleviate pressure from the property tax and allow user fees, if you will, to help provide a revenue source instead of taxation. Happy to answer any questions about any of those. I know we've all talked about them previously. All right, quickly shifting. I appreciate everybody's patience. Yeah, I need to stand up, move around a little bit, maybe get a coffee. To the expenditure side of the budget, again, as I mentioned, it's about a $116.2 million budget. This is just the functional allocation and demonstrates, for example, that 23 cents out of every dollar we spend in Burke County goes to education. That would be community college and public schools. What I'd point out is, over the last couple of years, public safety's remained your top functional allocation. We've seen a decline in human services and an uptick in education by about two points. The other functions have largely remained the same. Here's just your percentage of change year-over-year. So again, a 2.82% change this year. We've put a flat line, 4% kind of. We've put a flat line, 4% kind of trend line here, just to show that going all the way back to 2011, 2012, what's been the year-over-year total change in the county's general fund budget. So here, I've broken it out by expenditure type, people, operations, capital, education, our commitment to debt. So there's about a $2.4 million increase in salaries. That is reflective of a couple of things. One is a 2.25% COLA that we'll talk about in just a moment. There's also the increase to employee health insurance. I mentioned the treasurer's retirement rate increase is also a component of that. All of that is 401K, Medicare, Social Security, all of the components that go into paying people are included in that number. Our operating budget was relatively flat. Operational capital saw a decline. Education is up $332,250. That goes to Burke County Public Schools, the remainder to Western People and Community College. Our debt service transfer, even though our debt is seeing its organic, natural decline, we're overfunding our debt service in anticipation of the HRC, building an option for that $10 million potential borrowing to renovate that space, that setting up that kind of sinking fund. Our capital and risk management transfer are unchanged. Economic development and community partnerships are, again, pretty similar to prior years. This is just showing, and that's supposed to say, I apologize, these headers are not on there for some reason, but this is personnel, operations, and capital. So this is Burke County comparing itself to these other regional peers as to the compartmental allocation of our budget. So about 75% of our budget goes to people, about 22% operations, and about 3% to capital. So one of the things that we like to talk about is, if we were a private company, we offer a service, we're a service providing corporation, and we charge a price for that, and to make sure that that price is fair and acceptable to our community. What we know is that we have the 82nd lowest tax burden per capita, which means if you take our total taxing revenue and divide it by the total number of people in Burke County, which may not be the most clear way to arrive in analytic, but it's true for every county. It's a comparable apples-to-apples analytic that you can do. We're about $657 per capita, and again, only about 17 counties in North Carolina are lower than that. So when we look at the services that are included in next year's budget that are required, as we all know, we're a political subdivision of the state of North Carolina, and largely what we perform, the services we offer are statutorily required. So we know out of our $657, about $525 of that is for services that are required by statute or by the Constitution, and about another $132 are required for things that this board has authorized, but are largely adding to quality of life or to community needs based on policy. And the way that you would read this, for example, is every person in Burke County pays about $10.09 for animal services and so forth and so on for these functions that are there. Some other highlights, as I mentioned, this budget is developed for the third consecutive year from a zero base. It's not incremental budgeting, so included in your packet is details for what makes up every number. You know, some things are like motor fuel. We don't have the number of times we're putting gallons in there, but we do have analytics for the 230 vehicles we have in our fleet, and how many miles did that vehicle have from January to December, and what was the total fuel purchase cost, and that allows us to forecast that out. That's an example of zero-based budgeting. Since 2022-23, we've seen a reduction in our operating cost by about $395,000. We have a two-phase approach to employee pay, a 2.25% COLA. That would be a cost of living or inflationary offset, along with continuation performance pay in 401K. Last year, this board allocated $50,000 to support meals on wheels. So as you know, we get about $135,000, $140,000 a year from a home community block grant to provide meals on wheels. We have a waitlist of over 500, and so last year, you actually allocated local dollars for the first time ever to help support that, and we've kept that in the budget. Our commitment to roadside litter cleanup and the community beautification, implementation of CAB and the great grant for broadband expansion, educational support, both the community college and public schools, and then obviously continuing, all these things staying inside the parameters of the spending policies that you all have set. I'll move through your strategic plan focus areas really quickly, but number one being employer of choice, I do think this budget recognizes our performance management systems. I do think that we'll be able to accomplish the goal of substantial equivalency. We have policy modernization, which is a component of that that will be presented to you next month, and that application will be heard by the state likely in August. I do think we have competitive fringe benefits, including year one of doing biometrics for employee performance-based wellness initiatives, meaning we've measured those, blood pressure and A1C and those type of things. We made some modifications to our Wellworks clinic, and we are planning an employee recognition event next year to highlight employees who align with our values and employees who have reached tenure goals. The total gross wage allocation for next year is about $32.28, or excuse me, $39.28 million, up just a shot from the prior year, as you can see the average wage, hourly wage also going up. That 2.25% recommended COLA, you can see how it compares statewide to about 3.1. This is all of the counties in western North Carolina. They're at that 3.1. The central part is a little bit higher. We've also compared to counties above that 100,000 citizens, their average employee COLA is 2.9%, and those between 25 and 99 is 3.1. So we're a little bit lower than the market, but our team feels, given the comprehensive pain classification study and some of the other fringe components that we offer, that we are competitive and we will remain competitive. Part of that is our performance management system. The same five performance metrics will be included in next year's recommended budget with a goal of moving from the organizational component to the departmental component during the upcoming 12 months. Another add that we've tried to identify as being an employer of choice is our Employee Wellworks clinic. As you all are aware, this is a direct contract, so these are not claims paid from our Employee Wellness Fund. We partner directly with Blue Ridge Health, and our employees are able to go to these urgent cares, and there's no billing of our insurance, there's no cost to the employee. The idea is to avoid employees going to the emergency room or avoid going to other primary care or urgent care clinics and using their insurance card, which then comes back directly to us. And what we found was that there was a real gap for after 5:00 and on the weekends. Our plan last year paid $62,000 in urgent care after 5:00 in the weekend cost and another $132,000 in emergency room. When we worked through each of those claims, we think that of that $203,000, a substantial portion is avoidable if we had extended hours. So we've renegotiated the contract with Wellworks, with Blue Ridge. We've added three additional sites, Valdez Mirin and Cages Mountain. We've added Saturday, Sunday hours, and then three additional hours from 5:00 to 8:00, and we were able to do that at a cost of $2.50 per month. And so the idea is, we can reduce a substantial component of this $203,000 for an additional investment of $25,000 and provide return there that hopefully our Employee Wellness Fund is able to benefit from, as well as offering something unique and meaningful to our employees. Under your public safety and well-being focus area, we hope to continue to reshift our community paramedic role to meeting more of a true community paramedic and looking at some of those frequent flyers, implementation of the opioid settlement fund, as well as the capital grant, this was partnered with Behavioral Health. Continuing fleet management and rolling stock plan, our sheriff's department has allocation for 12 new patrol cars next year. That's $865,000, and EMS is going to continue year two of our new operating lease that provided. We now have seven new trucks, five of them are included in that lease. Support for volunteer fire departments and centrally administered public safety equipment replacements, such as public gradios, which we know was a real problem a couple of years ago. We had 212 that were about to be into life with no replacement schedule. And the newest component of public safety infrastructure that needs a replacement plan is cardiac monitors. We use Zoll. This is, so it's two things. One is a cardiac monitor, the other one is an auto-pulse, automatic CPR machine, very, very expensive per unit. We have about 18 or 19 of those in our fleet, and in the next two years, they will all be end of lives, because that's what manufacturers do. And we've evaluated alternative vendors, but all of our fire departments and other co-responding first responders use this equipment. It's really the industry-leading, so we've factored that into our asset replacement schedule. As well as continuing to implement our public safety strategic plan. In totality, the allocation for public safety is about $30,937,000. That's a 3% change from the prior year. You will see in EM, Fire Marshal's Office change. Fire Marshal's Office is shifting the emergency management function up to emergency services, so a 4% growth there and an 18% decline for the Fire Marshal's Office. When I look at our volunteer fire departments, we have 21 of them. We have one proposed rate change this board gave direction on for Salem, moving to 10 cents. The average rate across the county is 10.8 cents. That's a $6.9 million total allocation, and the average revenue per unit is about $384,000. I'll pause here just for a moment, but you can see property values and estimated revenue by unit. Again, I've highlighted Salem as the only one with a proposed rate change. Everybody else will be staying consistent with prior years, but you can see, again, the estimated revenue there on a unit-by-unit basis. Under your focus area number three, community advancement, housing product. Again, we talked a lot about that with Alan this morning or this evening. We've already began some of that, but we want to stay committed to that. There's a lot more changes that need to go, as Alan mentioned, starting to develop a true UDO, and this year's budget considers that. As well as implementing, creating, designing our first-ever Citizens Academy, and we've talked a lot about that in detail, but that's an opportunity for folks who want to know more and be involved, to have that opportunity to visit with county employees, to visit sites, to ask questions, to be a part of the input session, and in a really unique environment. We're very excited about that. Our broadband expansion strategy is, the board's original goal was to be over 90%. I think we're trending more towards 100% with some of the awards that we've got in the last couple of weeks, but they've got to be monitored and implemented. We talked a lot about AIA, so water sewer expansion. We know that helps housing. We know that helps economic development. We know that helps existing citizens who just want access to county water, or it could be public safety. We know that there's a three-mile loop, for example, in Anola, George Shilbrand, South Mountain area, that is Class 10, Class 9, Class 10, from a Department of Insurance perspective, because they have no hydrants. Well, you need county water in order to do eight-inch piping and fire hydrants and see the suppression and all that type of thing. So that AIA study, I think, is a big part of housing, economic development, and public safety. When I look at our outside partnerships, here's a quick optic of funding partners that we have. I will point out that Burke Rescue has a $25,000 increase. They've presented to you all a couple of times and outlined many of their out-of-pocket volunteer costs of buying their own equipment. I would point out that they have a new board, a new chief, and a clean audit this year for the first time since I've been in Burke County, and I'm very pleased with that. No other really major changes, other than an allotment to the friends there and then the Burke History Museum, which really, as we met with them, were a little bit unclear about purpose and direction, and felt like they had adequate resources on hand to accomplish the goals that they had set out at that moment. In total, it's about $426,000. It's about a $50,000 decrease from the prior year. Economic growth, largely about tax base and job creation, product development, that kind of goes with water sewer, community advancement, the AIA study, but continuing to prioritize the airport agreement with Hickory. We know that that's a direct return, marketing, the industrial show building, and trying to make sure that a lot of that is through support with our partners. But I feel like that we're able to accomplish each of those goals, and that was a big part of your strategic planning work session back in March. Under fiscal stewardship, again, your equity policy at 25%. We talked about the MSW sale earlier as a top priority, looking to be lean and efficient in all the things that we do in measuring that, department by department. Continuing to pursue grants, we have 39 active grants right now that account for about $10 million that the county's not having to fund, so we certainly want to continue to grow and expand that. Continuing to be focused on your capital improvement plan. Option four specifically for HRC, the HHS building is well underway. And then continue, I think, more importantly than creating sustainability for our enterprise funds, is to make those really perform at an industry best practice level, not just a getting-by level. Under fiscal stewardship, several metrics that we try to make sure that, again, we've managed inside of, as we have this idea of managing within our means. You all have a fund balance policy, and you have several debt and financial policies. We think this budget will meet each of those. There are no personnel requests in this budget. This budget does not create any additional county employees. Grant management strategies and reengineering cost savings and initiatives. The board's very aware of these, but just as a highlight, your tenure payout percentage currently is at 77%. It'll be increasing next year, and you can see how we compare in 2024 compared to national and state peers. Your policy says that you have to be above 50%, so you're clearly well inside that. Your debt service percentage as a percentage of total expenditures, currently you're at 6.9%. That'll go down just a little bit as the budget grows by 2.8%. And your debt to assess, which is good, anything lower than 8% is as good as you can get, according to Moody's and S&amp;P. And then your debt to assess value, which is your ability to generate revenue, again, at 3, 3800ths of a percent. You can see how we compare both nationally and state, and obviously, the lower the number, the better, the stronger you are. Capital improvement, plan funding, this is your major projects, and this is just showing that animal services, EMS, and the courthouse are all in process. The Health and Human Services Building is in design phase. There's been an RFQ that's been reviewed and interviewed. That could be up to a $10 million project. That's the only project on this plan that has the potential of being debt-funded. Everything else was cash, grant, and the cash coming through a federal allotment. We do the same type thing for non-major, so as you can see, there's a list of projects, and typically, we are three or four years out. So when department heads turn in their budget in February, one of the components is an operational component. They have a rates and fees component. They also have a current-year capital and out-year capital to try to avoid oversight or what I would call scope gaps. So I'm asking them to think four or five years, and anything over $50,000 that could be a capital issue of note, they're asked to identify that now. And we try to have streamlined what I would call flat level of funding, so we can put about 1.3 cents of our tax rate, 1.3 million a year, into out-year capital. And for things that have, again, this idea of material cost, we amortize that over time so that it's not such a big impact on our budget in any particular year. So for example, when a department head says, we're going to need X, and I'm saying, you know, this costs $100,000, I need to know about that four years ahead of time, so I can break that cost down and remove that volatility. Same for our water sewer and our solid waste fund. The big thing that I would point out for solid waste next year, currently, our landfill has one scale in and one scale out, and your fee is based on your weight and your changing weight. So we have a goal next year of adding an additional scale, scale house in the middle. You have an in-scale and an out-scale, because it has been a real challenge. Prior to this year, much of what was going into the landfill, inappropriately, what the fee schedule wasn't being applied to, so the scale was less critical. And this year, we've tried to implement this longstanding fee schedule and charge for things that aren't covered in that household fee. That's created long wait lines that are cumbersome to our people, and we want to be sensitive to that. Here, I'm just showing our total commitment to rolling stock and operational capital, same kind of concept, trying to forecast that out and flatline that over time to avoid volatility. When I look at public education funding, I think your goals, at least as I understand them, have been largely consistent. We wanted to be as competitive as we can from an operational per pupil perspective, continue to look for teacher supplement increases, and then evaluate teacher-student ratios. Next year's budget moves your allocation up $250,000. It's about 1%. That takes the total funding to $20,500,000. It's an increase of about $22.75 per pupil. I put this in just to show the purchasing power kind of cost index over time, going all the way back to 2004. And the idea is, the cost of inflation since 2004 is about 52%. So if you evaluate the funding level, that was about $13 million in 2004 compared to funding level today, really, the purchasing power, when adjusted for time value of money, is similar. So even though the county commissioners are providing, you know, about $7 million more a year than you were 20 years ago, the ability for the school system to use that is largely the same as it was, and it's just reestablished to that level. I would say over the last five to seven years, it's been lower. So again, the ability for them to buy material So again, the ability for them to buy materials and use that has been, as far as how it can be stretched, having a lower impact, but I think you've reestablished that to comparable levels. This is looking at Western Piedmont. The total allocation next year is $3.5 million. You can see their FTE is kind of straight-lined, flat-lined FTE in community college world's students, full-time students. The total budget will see a 2.6% increase, that's about $70,000. We've compared to these peer county and community colleges. For example, the Western Piedmont folks are about 3% of our total budget, how that compares. We compared about $1,619 per FTE, how we compare there, and this budget also includes year three of flat capital. As you can see, prior to a couple of years ago, it was up and down, difficult to plan. You didn't know from one year to the next what the allocation amount should be, so it makes forecasting very difficult. Next year will include year three of a $425,000 capital that goes into an escrow account held by the county, so when the community college needs to make a drawdown, they would come present their project to this board, and you would have the opportunity to decide on that. So at the end, currently, there's about $850,000 in that fund, and that would be another $425,000 allocation. Our solid waste department has total revenues budgeted at $7,590,000, expenditures 6.2. We're going to continue doing our own in-house transport as we're moving towards as much compacting as we can do. This year, we moved to compacting cardboard, it's been overwhelmingly positive. We want to look for other ways to compact, because that reduces trips, saves fuel, saves tires, saves brakes, all the things that go with handling this much material. The only proposed change is in our municipal household fee from $88 to $92. That is a 5.1% increase that is simply passed along from Republic. As you all know, we take our MSW solid waste to Republic, to their landfill in Caldwell County. They've increased our cost, and we've matched that to offset that increase. On the sewer, water sewer side, both water and sewer, the monthly flat fee of $25 is proposed to increase by $5 to $30. No consumption changes. That will remain flat, $6.50 per $1,000 of consumption. We are proposing a municipal sewer fee increase from $5 to $5.50, and that is to begin to hedge some of the AIA that we know is coming into our system from our municipal partners. As you all know, and we've talked about many times, we are paying both Valdez and City of Hickory for lots of infiltration and infill that comes into our system that county taxpayers and county customers are paying for that are originating outside of our system. We don't have that completely nailed down to say who owns what yet, so we've met with each of Road Yes, Conley Springs, Rutherford College, to try to have that conversation of this is beginning to move that direction. We hope this time next year to have a long-term rate stabilization model that can more precisely, we're putting in sewer meters and some other things that will help us be more surgical in our approach to the fee allocation. Lastly, I'm transitioning to employee wellness. Again, a 6% increase takes our county contribution per member per month from $850 to $901. When you apply that across the population, that's roughly a $500,000 increase that you're seeing. Couple of good things I'd point out. Net claims paid, just-for-claims paid is performing exceptionally well, exceptionally well. We've also been able to decrease, and we still got a long way to go, but we've been able to see some improvement in our percentage of our claims that are going to pharmacy. Those are two goals this year. I want to continue to push those down. I think there's opportunity for additional cost savings in this fund as we move forward, and really, on an 8.3, almost 8.4 million dollar fund, every percent matters, right? And not to mention, it's the people behind it certainly that are the most important. So here again, I just mentioned the increase in investment to keep that plan whole. I would point out that we have two plans in Burke County, an HSA plan and a PPO plan that our employees can choose. The PPO plan for spouses dependent will see a 10% increase. The HSA plan will see a 6% increase. Our dental coverage for what's available to our folks will be expanded, and I think this budget does meet all of our major operational and major capital needs. That's a lot of information in a fairly short period of time. I appreciate everyone's attention very, very much. Certainly happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman. If not, looking for the board commissioners to receive this and then also set a public hearing.
All right, Mr. Manager, would you mind running back through that one more time? Okay. That won't be necessary. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Gentlemen, any questions at this point?
I only have one question. In the House budget bill or package that's being sent through, there's a proposal to use Article 42 funds to fund the Viper radio system that would become effective July 1st, 2025. What potential impact, given that 60% of Article 42 is already allocated to school capital?
Yeah.
That leaves about 40%. I think we'd share that.
So you're right, Article 42 by state law already has 60% allocation to school capital, which in Burke County goes to complement lottery proceeds and pay debt service. I'm well aware, and I think most people are, that the Viper radio system is in need of some changes and improvements, and that was a large reason for interoperability, why we had to make a sweeping radio purchase, not only Motorola, but also to be compliant with some software upgrades so that our systems would still talk and work. 40% of that being retained by the state would be a big deal to Burke County?
I'm not sure what percentage of that 40% they want to capture.
Yeah.
I haven't gotten into the details of that. I can tell you that the County Commission Association is looking at this as kind of a watershed moment when the state starts to get into our sales tax, and you know, we all understand that adware and taxes and sales taxes are our two primary biggest sources of revenue.
Yeah.
I would like for us to look at that and then decide if it's something that we want to make sure that we come out strongly against. I feel like it is. If they start pulling down Article 42 to support Viper radios, that's going to be trouble for us.
So just a couple of things off the cuff. Obviously, it would impact all county's, and it would fundamentally change a law that's been in place for some time. So certainly, there's no consideration of that change in this year's budget. That's what I would say, and I don't know how you could have forecasted that. That would leave such a gaping hole that it would be all but impossible to balance. But we certainly can do at a staff level as much research as we can and make sure that the board's up to speed and that any advocacy or opposition that we want to show locally, that we're prepared to do that.
I have one more quick question. So I'm not sure where House Bill 219 stands at this moment, but it's the one that deals with the ability to franchise patient transport in the county. Losing the ability to transport patients, would that significantly affect our public safety funding?
So my understanding is that bill is still in committee with Rules Committee. I think more importantly, would it have an economic impact? Absolutely. Would it have a patient care and patient outcome impact, more importantly? Without question. What Commissioner Burns is speaking to is there is a statute, a law that's been statewide for many, many years that allows counties to control a franchise for who can run an ambulance inside their boundaries, and that largely helps support the 911 system and reduce cost so that patient care remains the top goal. So yes, if there was a lower-cost option and the commissioners did not have the ability to control that, some of your outlying, less dense, populated, more rural areas would absolutely, one of two things, either see an impact to patient care and emergency response or a significant increase in cost to county taxpayers. One of those two things would absolutely happen.
I think there was like 1,011 bills that came out of the House, and I think 294 of them actually crossed over.
Yeah.
There was 760-some-odd came out of the Senate, and I think 104, don't quote me on that, actually crossed, and only three have become law. So everything else is still at play. But I just learned about the possibility of taking Article 42 sales dollars to support the Viper system Saturday.
The franchise bill was originated from hospital caucuses for transport reasons.
The last thing I want to say is, wow, I look at this budget you guys put together, and you can tell there's a lot of sweat and tears that went into this. I want to thank you and your staff and everybody else for that.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions, comments?
All right, gentlemen, I entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the manager's recommended budget for fiscal year 2526.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to acknowledge receipt of the manager's recommended budget for fiscal year 2526.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. All those who favor receipt, if I'd be up lifted hand, 5-0. Also entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for Monday, June 16th, 2025, at 6:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as persons may be heard. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to schedule a public hearing for Monday, June 16th, 2025, at 6:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as persons may be heard.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry. All those who favor receipt, if I'd be up lifted hand, 5-0. Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to item number 11, reports and comments tonight. A few courtesy reminders. May the 26th, county offices, the landfill, and convenience sites are closed in observance of Memorial Day. A Memorial Day program will be held by Molly Eller, our Veteran Services Officer, at 11:00 AM at Foothills Higher Education Center. June the 2nd, pre-agenda meeting will occur at 3:00 PM here in this room. I would entertain the request for youth groups and others who might be interested in leading our pledge of allegiance at the beginning of our commission meeting, to please sign up. There is a form on our website for that. We would appreciate any assistance there. All right, with that, let's go to item number 12, vacancy announcements. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and ladies and gentlemen of the audience. We have the following opportunities for citizens to be engaged in county boards and committees: the Adult Care and Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, the Burke County Public Health Advisory Board, the Hickory Regional Planning Commission, Drexel Planning Board, ETJ Alternative, Burke County Planning Board, Partners, Health Management's Human Rights Committee, Burke Development, Inc., and the Animal Advisory Board.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, this time I'll open the floor for any other comments from commissioners or staff. Ms. Margaret coming down the line, Mr. Turner?
Nothing else, Mr. Chair.
No? Mr. Chair?
Good.
Mr. Manager?
I'll settle down.
Yes.
Just a reminder to remember those folks that gave their lives, the ultimate sacrifice for our country on Memorial Day, and don't forget, school lets out next Friday. Be mindful of all the teachers and principals on the road running around ecstatically. Don't run over them. Thank you.
Commissioner Barry. Madam Clerk.
All right, I don't have any other comments tonight. I'm glad to say, in item number 13, we do not have a need for a closed session. That will bring us to item 14. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. All those who favor receipt, if I'd be up lifted hand. Bill, did your hand go up?
I did, yes, sir.
Mr. Burns, I didn't see your hand. 5-0, Madam Clerk. We adjourned. Thank you very much for your attendance tonight.